Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Independence City Council meeting. It's Tuesday, June 12th, 2018. I'll let the record show that everybody's here. We're all a little worn, but everybody's here and happy. Council members, what I'd like to do is let's do the minutes first and then you can have a slight change to the minutes. Are they okay with everybody?
I'm to approve.
Second? I'm motion second. I'll never say goodbye, but I say aye.
Aye.
I oppose motion three. Thank you very much. We have a special guest in the audience tonight. I asked Councilors to indulge us to change the agenda just a little bit so he can make a presentation. He flew in from Italy to be with us today and I'm gonna ask Sean Irvine to make a introduction and we'll go from there.
Okay.
Yes.
Great. So, Mayor, Council, appreciate the opportunity here. You've heard me talk before about the virtual situation room project that we were able to partner up with a giant company on. This was an international smart cities challenge that we've won. And with the firewall, which is a European-based software platform, they connected us with a company called Team Dev out of Italy to develop a virtual situation room to help us manage these live work events. And since it is getting close, they've sent one of their team out here to help us with some training and also to kind of get some final bugs worked out before the event. So, I asked Massey Viano to give you just a quick run for of just kind of walking through what the virtual situation room is, kind of what the general idea is that it's suited to and how it will work. So, I'm gonna turn it over to you.
Thank you. Welcome to Independence.
Thank you, good evening. First of all, I'd like me to express a thank you for this opportunity because for our company it's very important to be here today and so I wanted to thank you for this opportunity. West Town Situation Room is the product we are going to use to manage the Independence Situation Room, we can say that it's a system for event management. What is new land for event within limited situation in time and space. We have two main purposes, to keep this situation under control and so we can do this by showing all the information on a geographic dashboard. And then the other purpose is to organize the work and so we have task management. Okay, Situation Room is a system, is a cloud system. This means that you don't have to take care of the included work. We can take information from sensors, from high-end sensors, or from open data, but also from social networks, from Twitter, and from the application you already have to manage issues by citizens in the works. So, we have different views, our application for room manager and the mobile applications for regulators. But the center of the Situation Room is a map. It's a map that shows what is happening in real time. So, we have a basic function for the map. On this map, we will have a lot of data, data from sensors, traffic, real-time traffic, that about security, hydrography because the festival is near on Lille, about the health facilities, childhood integration facilities, and crime. We have analyzed the crime during the past year and we have some interesting data and the boundary is okay. Situation Room has a, shows the situation through the map and through a streamer. A streamer is, through this streamer, we can take the situation under control because the room manager can see the issues, task notification, messages, social network, tweets from social networks, and alarms from sensors. We, I, not worry, I don't know if this is, is, just to say that we have a task management and so we have a little roof to resolve any problem we could have. So. An important part of Situation Room is the staff. This is the staff management. This allows the room manager to coordinate people working for the event. Then we have a simple message system to communicate. And then we have, and finally, we have the integration with your issue, issue managing application in the works. Thanks to this, we can, if a citizen reports an issue, we can manage it in real time and we can solve it immediately. Thank you. If you have any questions, I'd like you here to explain.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Did you want to wrap up anything, Mr. Irvine?
Yeah, so, you know, I think we're really excited about how this is gonna work. He gave us, like I said, the training and more in-depth demo of the real Situation Room, which I think is gonna be interesting because you'll be able to track staff location. So, for example, and we'll have, for example, sensors on garbage cans to say when the garbage can is full. So, if one of those pops up and says it's full, you can look and see, oh, Joe's the nearest one to it. We assign the task Joe. He said, oop, got it. Goes over there, picks it up, says, task is done, and off we go. So, it's gonna really be able to deploy our resources much more efficiently during the event. That's probably the best thing we're gonna give. Massey Viano arrived late last night. He's up at 4:00 AM this time right now, so I wanted to give him a chance to get in early and then hopefully he can get back and visit there and do that.
Well, thank you very much for coming today. We appreciate it and we're glad that we're here to help test out the system for your company. We appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're gonna go back to regular schedule, if that's okay. We now have a certain public comment. The first person that would like to speak this evening is Victoria Prochek.
No. My mom.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, and staff. It's been a while since I've done this. I'm gonna speak and then my contractor would like to say a word in another form, so can you hear me okay?
I think so, yes.
I emailed everybody just a few minutes ago, so hopefully you got it. It included pictures, but if anybody wants to visual, I have the pictures here. And where I'm addressing is development codes for our community. You know, you can, if one engine.
Thank you.
Does anybody need a word or?
Just love Karen, that's all.
Okay.
Yeah, where do you get them from?
Thank you. I know it's appropriate. So, what I wanted to talk about was, I found out recently through making a phone call about setbacking issues on a fence for our property that we actually can't put the fence that we want to put in. So, I started doing some research. I'll get right into this because I know I'm on a timeframe. But the reasons for why we want a white vinyl fencing, which I know the code has changed, we're not exactly sure of the year, but it's estimated 2009. I don't know if we found out any clarification.
I'm gonna jump in here very quickly. The code was initially in, in 2010, if the prohibition was strict. So, actually, it was allowed for about two years, then in 2012, it was restored as a prohibition.
Okay. Reasons I don't have of why it was removed and added and removed, but virtually vinyl fencing is maintenance-free. You can fresh wash it every, for a few years or as needed and we must have a, for our situation, I have a disabled husband. He cannot undo any of the work outside, nor do I have the ability to do that. And we need a yard and we're completely restructuring our entire yard, relandscaping it to make this possible for us to stay in our home. Wood requires annual maintenance and it's costly, more costly now than vinyl. Actually, if you do some research on that, wood has gone up considerably. For the development code of 74.005-C point three, all fences shall be constructed in such materials to be compatible with the surrounding area. Vinyl fence is the most compatible with our type of house siding structure and type and color. We have a white house with white linings siding. A brick wrought iron does not go in our style home and would not look right. That would be a distraction and diminish not only the aesthetic look, but our property value to put that type of under fencing in. It's cost-effective versus wood or other materials. There's decorating options. Our style sizes are available. Pick the privacy R and L, so it's not just one kind that you can get. You can get all kinds of heights, lengths, designs. It's not like it was 20 years ago when it first came out, which may not have been as aesthetically pleasing at that time. Our community has multiple locations with various types of fencing. The pictures that I provided show that. I've been around the community because I wanted to be well-prepared when it came before you. There are a gazillion areas of our community with vinyl fencing of all sizes, types, heights, and styles. So, we do have in our community, I realize that some of it may have been put in during the OK period, but I believe some of it, information received, has been put in, quote unquote, per Zach legally, but they got away with it because they were unaware. And I don't think that's an excuse when someone puts something in against the code and not do anything about it. Most communities do allow vinyl fencing, including Beverly Hills, and I'll refer you over to the linking letter that Ann just produced. The vinyl is made of polyvinyl chloride. Some are made with recycled materials, making them environmentally complimentary, most durable, with least amount of regular maintenance, longer lifespan of wood, longer warranties, won't sag, do shape, and herbaceous to insects, and the rusting nails finish, won't peel, from discoloration, won't rot, work, fade, fire, and is corrosion-resistant. After they've been a few years, they'll look the same unlike wood. If you look at some of these pictures, again, in our community, I only found a couple of wood fences visible from a street perspective that were even decent. The rest were deteriorated, broken, needed paint, needed finishing, all kinds of things. And if that's what our city considers appropriate aesthetic pleasing, I'm shocked because it's not. It looks terrible. It's tacky. It looks rundown. We need this fencing to block animals, unfortunately, if you live on a corner. A lot of dog walking goes on. I am sick of dog urine all over everything I have. I can't, I don't know how to enforce that, but if I put up a fence to bar all the things we're adding into our yard, I hopefully won't have that issue. They're made in eight, six to eight sections, made very easily installed by snapping together with main posts between them for support. And they, we need it for a safety factor because we are adding a couple of water features. I wanna make sure our property is protected as well as any small children or animals that might wanna approach. Granted, some animals can get into the yard anyway, but it would help. Under here, I've submitted questions by email to some council members, as well as John McCarr, David Klein, Karen Johnson. Some of you may already not have received. Call the line and they'll come now. I received a response from Zach and David Klein, and this is my response to some of the statements and answers given to me in that email. Why is vinyl fence not allowed was one of my questions. Zach gave his response, this is standard in many cities. Myself and some others have contacted various cities and have reviewed development codes and have not found vinyl fencing to be restricted, including Beverly Hills. And again, I'll refer you to Ann's linking letter of June 12th. If you're willing to make a statement that is a, that is a standard in many cities, you need to be prepared to provide proof to back this statement. When Ann approached Zach about which cities he was referring to, or David, I'm sorry, the reply was that Zach is too busy to provide the backup of this statement and that we need to do our own research. Had there been a reversed comment made to you guys, you would have expected us to provide the proof to you, like which I'm doing tonight about what I want and why I feel is appropriate. If you do not have documentation, some statements like this should not be made. Why vinyl fences are not allowed? The second half of that question, Zach responded vinyl is a lower quality and aesthetically inferior material compared to wood. That isn't even close to the truth. The vinyl fencing actually adds, if you look around, the vinyl fences that are around our area actually make the places that they were on more attractive, but the wood fences do not, especially because they're not maintained. Unless you maintain it well, it's not going to add the aesthetic appearance that we want in our community. So, where does one find a definition of vinyl as being aesthetically inferior material compared to wood? I didn't find it anywhere. Clearly, as pointed out in Ann's linking letter, other cities do not hold that subjective opinion. I feel this is a very narrow, biased statement considering the information I found online about the durability and variety of type sizes of vinyl fencing. My response is shown in the pictures which I provided. The vinyl fence pictures, a multiple picture, all look extremely aesthetically pleasing while the wood, as I said, is deplorable, but we're not doing anything to change that. We're just letting it be what it is. Fences should be maintained. Our code said all fences should be maintained, so it's be in an upright, self-standing condition and repaired with the same or similar materials used for the existing fence. Don't see that happening. Multiple properties have wood chain link and metal pieces where the wood has fallen down. So, if they replace flats, they're discolored from the other wood, so it's not attractive. So, I, my question is what is being done about these properties? If tax-mated individuals of this community aren't allowed to enhance their properties to be more aesthetically pleasing and increase their property values through their resources, despite the existing high source, toxic smells, and other factors that we deal with right across from us diminishing our property value, then why are its only properties aren't being allowed to look like local buildings? I apologize for that statement, but it's true if you go through our community. What actions is the city taking about the wooden chain link fences in our city that no longer abide by the aesthetically required status of the fence code? So, that's a question I'm asking. Why does the fence type? Another question I did ask in the email, I said, why does this fence type proliferate despite that it is prohibited? The answer was any vinyl fence constructed prior to 2009. We've adjusted the time. We're legally permitted under the prior fencing regulations, vinyl fences constructed after 2009 or 10, whatever, are likely illegal. In many cases, people erect fences without contacting the city as to the applicable regulations simply because they're unaware that a permitting process exists. That's not an excuse for them to be allowed to have a vinyl fence and me not when I did the right things.
So, let me, let me, because I know there are other people that would like to speak today. So, what you're asking for is, and because I read your email previously, and so what you're, you're asking us to do is to consider whether we want to continue having the prohibition of vinyl fences in Independence is what I.
I have about 30 seconds left to read. I'd like to read it for public purposes. So, what actions is the city taking about fences put up illegally? When was the prohibition? Of course, we've talked about that. Can the standard be amended or an exception be made? I was told that there was a process, 35-day notice. I don't have 35 days. I'm in the midst of landscaping. I didn't know all of this was an issue until I called about the setback. But if you refer to the linking letter, there was a planning commission meeting recently where the code was waived, declined to height a building, and recommended proof to the council. It seems our city officials are thinking and choosing what they drink, and being appropriate to change in the building codes depending on who would benefit. That change can be made in the code, and the city allows unaware individuals to get away breaking the codes while the city chooses to turn the other way. Then what is the point of codes? Should I be able to expect the city to do it while I put up my illegal vinyl fence, even if it enhances our property and community while all around us, like you properties that disgrace and diminish the aesthetic appearance of our community we love? So, there's a reference to this, the link that, I'll, I have to go right here, to the linking letter, where a developer went to a council and needed to heighten, his building had eight feet, to be able to stand the code, not to, but he was given permission to. If that can be done that easily, then why can't this be done? Especially when we already have existing vinyl fencing in our area that is attractive and aesthetic, aesthetically pleasing. So, I just feel like we're kind of doing a two-edged sword. We're saying, okay, here, okay, there. Oh, they didn't know, so we're gonna let it go. We have a code, fences being, having to be maintained, but they're not, so we're just not gonna do anything. Where, where is the line? I don't understand where the line is for each individual.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay.
What did Gerald?
Other people who are, I, I wanted to recognize that Gerald Nichols wanted to be known that he was of concern about the same thing, but he didn't have a, are you Gerald?
Yeah, I'm Gerald.
Go ahead. I just wanted to, wish to.
I won't keep you guys long. I know you guys would listen and she's done a lot of research. She would like to have her fence put in. It's a PVC vinyl fence. It's recyclable material. I don't see how it's any different than wood. It's definitely better. It's been a lot of landscaping over the last 25 years and usually clients that have nicer homes put in a vinyl fence. So, it is an upgrade from wood fencing. She has, her husband is sick. She has to take care of him. She can't really maintain the fence. She doesn't wanna throw chemicals, you know, out, so I just wish you guys would consider. She's not asking for that. I don't, I don't think she's asking for the whole thing to be changed. In her case, I should need a picture of her home. I think it would enhance the property, make the community look better, keep the dogs out. She doesn't have water features going and Heather landscaping going in. So, I wish you would just consider.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Mr. Klein, did you want to, did you or any of your staff have any insight related to, and I know that there are rules about what you can and can't do this.
I think, and I think I've shared a little bit of my thoughts on this with you there. I see, if this is of interest to the council to initiate code changes to development code, I would suggest first and foremost that you schedule this for a regular gen item so that anybody, if there's notice to public at large, that you're taking this matter up. That said, if you choose at that point in time, could be as soon as your next council meeting, to refer the matter to the planning commission to start to work on, you know, with another minutes of the development code along these lines. There, I think our city planner has weighed in and said that there is a 35-day notice period required to DLCD. That's a part of my law. We can't change that. I don't know, frankly, I'm not very on the planning rules to know whether they can take this matter up during that 35-day period or if they have to wait for that contract to run. So, there, there is a sort of a step-by-step process and then, of course, at the end of the day, it would be, you know, should you, it should come back to you from the planning commission. You know, you would be looking at an ordinance, which again, typically an ordinance takes another 30 days to go into effect. So, to me, you know, to make this change in a way that somebody can do the work in the next week or two is virtually impossible, but not breakable, to do it. If it's a change that you want to see considered and that might have merit in the long term, there is a process. It's just not a quick, it's not a two-step. I mean, it's, there's a process in place and if that's your goal, then we'll come back to you at the next council meeting with staff report, explain, you know, describe the issues as we see and responding for it. We'll have the information that this cool jacket has provided, so that will certainly give us a light up on preparing that report. And you'll have the opportunity to refer to the planning commission if you so choose.
Next question. Please. So, what would be the timetable if we were to consider an exception in this specific case?
I think the planning, I think the city planner's works cannot, it's not something that should be created except that it's, that was, the variance process was described in the planning commission actions last week was something that would provide for the code, was anticipate the code and they followed the rules where it plays. There is a rule to vary a requirement of the code, a disorder or prohibition of the code through a variance. So, that's, that's a different question. I'm not aware of any way of, and I've exactly weighed in on that, and I think she's right. I can check it, I think it's right. It's different.
I wanted to say that I am very familiar with vinyl fencing because part of my family members put it up and it was very attractive. I don't see any problem with this. Is there a way we can declare a moratorium on any kind of fine that might be levied at this time? And is there a reason we can't refer it to planning commission tonight?
Well, I don't know about the first one. If you want to refer to the planning commission tonight, you have that, that for you again, you've not given us the information or considering this.
Other thoughts? Questions?
Well, I guess I'd just like to say, is there something we could perhaps staff to look into a little closer to see if there's some way we could look at this by the next council meeting in some way, talk to legal or something like that?
Yeah. What am I, what am I trying to achieve, so I pay, to give direction?
Okay, I'll just, I'll just state my opinion because I was on the planning commission, I think, when we, we talked about vinyl fences and most of the vinyl fences that I've seen, I think they're looking pretty tacky looking, like, like the plastic fences. However, that was, you know, 10 years ago and I think that the quality probably has gotten much better and or, and depending on the type of vinyl fence and certainly from the distant pictures I saw, this would talk your quality.
Right.
I would like to see if there is something the council can do.
I think.
Yeah, but what does that mean?
To somehow get an exception so that she would be able to put her vinyl fence in and then probably after that, look at our code and go through the process.
Unbased enforcement is probably on hearing.
Uh, that, you're the legal. Yes, we are.
Here's the, you have the problem. You can pay enforcement on this, I suppose, but if you, at the end of the day, you don't prove the change, then now you have a non-conforming use, one that's basically violation of the code and probably would have to be removed at the end of the day. But don't figure out that, and I think that's where you put her as somebody who wants to put their fence in at risk. Because, you know, you raised, you raised the issue. I've seen vinyl fencing in those days. I see vinyl fencing in these days. Beautiful vinyl fences out there. There's a ranch out here, it's just on Highway 99.
Right.
It's, you know, it's beautiful fencing. But then again, there's the old schlocky look in vinyl fencing, which I think was, you know, how do you, how do you regulate the one against the other? There probably is a way. I just don't know what it is. And so, staff are gonna have to get out there and help you with that because I think you don't want the latter, but you should do one, you know, you want an able performer, is what I'm hearing. So, I mean, there's a little bit of work that has to go into creating options and understanding the issue so that they can present it to you, most importantly, present it to the planning commission, who will take up the legislative piece first.
Right.
I recognize that, you know, your hearing is denied, your hearts were with it, you know, it seems reasonable, it sounds reasonable, certainly does to me as well, but at the end of the day, you know, you do sort of have a process in place that honors, one, notice to the public, you know, democracy at large, and people, everybody knows what it is, so everybody can weigh in on an issue. That's why you create a gentleman's advance notice on subsequent matters. And two, there's, what, there are complicating issues surrounding a vinyl fence, what quality vinyl fence is okay, what quality isn't. I don't have an answer to that. I know, but I see it, but I expect you to, but I'm not sure we see it the same way in regards of how we encode.
So, I'm gonna try to kind of.
See, more, more basic. All that said, I can go to the attorney and see if there's some way that Miss Prochek can proceed in a relatively reasonable way and report back to you.
Thank you.
I would like to see that.
Yes.
So, so let, if there's not objection, let's follow through with your, working with the legal folks, see if there's a, if there's an opportunity. Let's follow that up with, can you folks provide staff report at, so that we can take a look and, and look at the larger, the larger, longer issue because of what you said earlier. Yeah, I remember old time vinyl fencing that was less and.
And a lot, there's a lot in town, too.
Yes, there is. Does that sound like an okay approach to everybody on this side of the room or your table?
Yep.
Okay.
I'll go back to you with two things. One, an opinion from the attorney, whether it's both with the private, I don't know but an opinion from the attorney, how you can proceed in this instance. And secondly, a staff report allowing you and a gentleman allowing you to make a bigger decision about whether to refer the matter to the planning commission for, for change, you know, alter changes to development.
And can we have both of these goes in place by or before the next meeting?
Have what in place?
Have an answer from the attorney and also something on the agenda to discuss this in a larger field of vision.
It'll be in your agenda, the normal course of business as far as the legal advisor, you can't speak for the attorney, she's very busy. Okay, I'll make sure she understands that you need it at least by the beginning and if I can get it sooner, I'll share it with the mayor and you can, you know, he and I can talk about how to make it spread.
Okay.
That sound okay for both?
It does.
Right. Thank you.
So, I just have a question. So, I understand, what timeframe am I looking at getting any information about?
He's gonna, he's gonna call the legal people tomorrow and we'll see what can happen from there. We're moving as promptly as we.
I just wanted to have an idea so you can kind of.
Yeah, no, I understand and.
The council meeting would be in two weeks.
We could maybe know something more.
Yeah.
It's possible.
Well, and, and we'll do what, we'll do the best we can and I'm looking at staff. We'll do the best we can to keep these folks informed. Yeah.
And we will also appreciate getting all of the research that you've done because that may help the planning commission make an evaluation on what's appropriate and what's not.
Okay. The research I knew was just, I've been online into vinyl fences versus wood fences and found everything there.
Okay. Thank you.
You can do the same.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm gonna keep this moving. I have Jamie Bo. Um, I have, uh, Jamie Bo.
Good evening and welcome. Hi.
Hi, counsel. Staff. So, um, I came here last year, yesterday before the [inaudible 00:03:59]. The story was, uh, I had a flag being sold to a vendor. They didn't seem, uh, disturbing me, but you got a work report. So I could go follow up here with your staff and, you know, uh, city attorney and your kids, some very gracious answers. Okay. So I just wanted, um, I just have a few points. I want to throw a few assumptions about this. Is there actually a vendor this year selling the flanks? Otherwise they get [inaudible 00:04:03]. Give me a.
What is our, what is our [inaudible 00:04:07]?
The, the vendors are signed up through the Western Days Commission.
Right.
And we don't have that information with us.
Okay.
And, but we, I can certainly find out.
So I'm going to say humble pitch. Okay. So the next one is such a, so that, you know, without cutting you down neatly, can I assume that you're in spirit kind of agreeing with what I, the pitch I made? I mean, okay. The idea is like this, there's something not good here and it's nice to be respected. That's just the First Amendment speech issues. But in spirit, if, if you had your brothers, would you rather not have this in your park with this family friend there? I'm saying, I'm saying yes. And I think you are. And so, so I'm going to go with yes on that. So, because you go back to your office and you're going, you know, we saw the rise again. We've been losing time. And, you know, quite a different battle. So anyway, so like the, uh, the Western Days webpage that advertised this as a, actually friendly, fun for all agents, but in reality, you know, that is a stretch, but that's what I'm buying. And I see this and it's, it's not friendly, but disturbing because I know this. So the Western Days, you know, this is a very good C-Max page, but because of this thing, it's less than what's being advertised. So that's my fault. This, and I'm pretty used to going. If I just saw something that's on the edge, like, yeah, that's not, that is, I would just say, I don't want to go. But this, a lot of people I talk to feel the same. So that's why that's my motivation. So, and, uh, sent an email with some examples. Vermont has a couple of camping fairs. They restrict the sale. And the city attorney came back and says, Oregon has, um, besides the First Amendment and federal, but some state law of Portland and the, uh, a resource group want to get advertisements. And of course, as you can't restrict that. So that's kind of the opinion of the city attorney. So the vendor could probably prevail. So my question is, let's say the city attorney missed that in school and didn't know about this case. Why not let the vendor litigate? Why not say, okay, we have a handbook. And there's several pieces of the handbook that say the discrimination and prohibited prohibited items is an absolute expression of what that management, uh, that management ensures the right or he's loose, uh, late, many standards, standard, even unsuitable activity. So let's just say you went with your handbook. You got language that says, yeah, we're saying, Mr. [inaudible 00:05:15]. That the vendor listed it. Now he has to make calculations. I'll spend it, businessman. But I want to go through the [inaudible 00:05:23]. Or, and, you know, I'm probably not wealthy, so I, you know, maybe he still, he would take his place, but I don't know if that's an option. But you follow your handbook. The city manager says maybe this handbook needs revision. Well, city, you got language here. You follow it. Vendor, sorry, can't sell the [inaudible 00:06:01]. Let them push the litigation. Otherwise you get, you're going to be passed. We're saying, we think in the future, this would prevail in your favor, but you work with it. I mean, I'm just thinking, is that possible? Okay. So let's try another [inaudible 00:06:30]. I'm, let's pretend again, I'm wealthy. I'm not wealthy. Now I'm wealthy. Um, and I rent the park out. I have a huge park. And I think there's provisions for that. I can get application. This is possible, right? I can rent the park. And I can create an event on August 4th, July 4th. To the user of this, all this, the customer, it all looks the same. And I can restrict whoever I want in terms of my partner with vendors. I don't have to let anybody in anymore. It's my work. I don't, I don't want you to. I couldn't resist. Um, it's my work. So now that extends that one bit further, the Western Days Commission is an arm of the city that's operating. It's not a nonprofit. Let's say it was a 501(c)(3). It's a nonprofit.
It's a commission. It's a commission. Yeah.
Oh, let's say, because I helped resurrect the heritage museum society. So, um, so I know, I know a little bit about a 501(c)(3). Let's say the Western Days Commission now became 501(c)(3) nonprofit. They do all the same stuff as they did before, but now they have land [inaudible 00:07:11]. Because it's their park. And it's like, you know, the change from Linux to Windows is all in the hood. You would know from the user point of view, right? But the hood is a different animal. I'm wondering, I know that's a lot of work, but I think, you know, there's a benefit there too. Okay. So, oh, and I read this just about an hour before I came over. Page six of the, uh, [inaudible 00:07:58]. And Penn State is sponsored by PepsiCo. Therefore vendors are required to sell Pepsi, Ponce, Pepsi, not new, Gatorade, not the pepper, et cetera. So now, wait a minute. I'm a vendor. Sponsor making me sell Pepsi. I can't sell Coke. But you, the owner, they're saying, uh, you can sell whatever flags you want under the number of [inaudible 00:08:01], et cetera. So that's where the, the sponsor says you can't sell Coke and sell Pepsi. But on my [inaudible 00:08:11]. I like Coke. I wagered, I got a flag. Okay. This is another inconsistency in areas of manual. And, um, okay.
Final thought?
Final thought? Here's something that the Independence, uh, Indiana State Fair did. They didn't outright restrict the sale of the flags. They just asked, asked the vendor not to do it. Have we done that? Why can't we do that? Why can't we just ask the vendor, people are saying about this, it's sensitive. You just not do it. Besides, they have all the [inaudible 00:09:07]. So anyway, those are my ideas.
Thank you for taking the time. Let, let me just weigh in here for the first second. And, uh, I'm not going to do a dialogue, but let me just say, um, I understand completely. I have no love for, for folks who are, or, uh, you know, showing that kind of flag and stuff like that. And I actually did visit with the vendor face to face and said, it's not something that, uh, but, uh, and after visiting with our attorneys and as the city manager has pointed out, there are restrictions on, uh, through the Oregon constitution of what we can and can't do. Now, uh, manager and I were visiting in advance of the meeting and, uh, unless staff, unless the council objects, I would like to do a direct staff to, uh, one, take a look at the manual, make sure that it's appropriate and to see if there's any appropriate signage, somehow to express that if that has to be there, that we don't endorse, condone, love, like, or anything like that, that we, uh, First Amendment is sometimes uncomfortable. And, uh, I, uh, yeah.
Can I ask a question here?
Sure.
No, I'm just going.
Okay.
Either way. I'm just going to say, I'm a little hesitant in trying to stir up a conversation by being explicit. I mean, I'm, anybody that will talk to us will know that if you don't.
Right.
Do that by creating signage or something that's confrontational versus I'm, I'm, I'm thinking you're inviting a bigger problem than they, if they just current. You know, because then you're inviting debate to happen.
My question is, have you been to see or to talk to the Independence Days Commission?
Hello?
Okay. It seems like that would be a wise first choice because this body has empowered them to operate that festival on our behalf. And Counselor Hicks is the, or the council liaison for that particular commission. So I might want to talk to him afterward.
Now, do people have opinions that want to share about this?
Just, I appreciate the advocacy. Um, I think we all know that we already that City of Independence is an inclusive city. And so, you know, if you treat racism, that's not okay. He took us there. He said, that's not okay. I think it's okay for us to have an opinion on whether or not we agree that's okay or whether or not we agree that's right. But there's laws and laws and I think if we can't say that they cannot sell them, I think we appropriate to say that we like.
Counselor Hicks.
I, I modify what I was saying. I, I do think a general statement may be okay, you know, just, uh, you know, in independence value, you know, everybody and just a general sign like that is just not pointing at what exactly you're talking about.
You know, we just [inaudible 00:09:31].
That would be great.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Does that provide you a little bit of, uh?
Well, what we could do is help you at least prepare a proclamation or something that could be shared with people at the event, something that could be posted, something.
That might accomplish the same thing, yeah. Uh, let's see what, what we can do on and see what happens in the next meeting. Does that sound okay? Is that all right?
Yes, sir.
Appreciate. Yes, sir.
I would only add, if you haven't gone to law school yet, you may want to consider. It's very creative and then you approach.
I'm not sure if you've been complimented or.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, yeah, that's fine. Uh, I did have a couple of questions for you. I guess it would be better directed to the Western Days.
I think that.
Commission because that's another possible solution to mitigate the whole thing to be found just in some, you know, structured details.
Okay.
Without taking it to, you know, street court.
Thank you for taking the time for me. Is there anybody else who wants to? I'm sensitive to the warmth and the rest of the agenda. Thank you. Appreciate it. Is there anybody else who has anything they need to say this evening? Okay, we're going to keep this moving forward. Um, I don't have substantive report to make at this point, so I'm going to move directly to, uh, our city manager's report.
In the interim, may I wish you a happy birthday tomorrow?
Thank you. Appreciate that.
I'll try to make up through your absence of report by any time. Mayor, members of council, uh, I'll try not to be too hard. I know it is a warm evening, but I do have a few things to tell you, some of this related news. So I'll start, I'll just start the talk more [inaudible 00:09:52]. We haven't listened. Again, as you all know, I, I ask my management team to contribute ahead of time things that they think that would be, you know, of particular interest to you and likely will turn up in the typically turn up in our management notes to you so that this is sort of, uh, you know, the highlights of everybody's work, certainly not mine. So just to make sure that's clear. Um, first off, Mount Fur Park, as we all know, and you know, Inspiration Garden is a real jewel that we've, you know, thank you to the hard works of the extension service folks are, are great, are great crowd. Uh, anyway, we have made Wi-Fi available at the park, so that's now available for use there. We are also installing security cameras. That's frankly in response to some bad behavior that took place out there. So that, that ended well. Definitely lots of [inaudible 00:10:00]. We're going to go and try and be a little more preventative in, in the, in the future. And all the works have done a good job of completing the first segment of the trail out there. So we're, we're making good progress, trying to support the people that support us. You know, again, anyone that does not mind Inspiration Park, please get out there and dig a little bit. It's truly amazing volunteer effort. So, uh, on to other matters. So you, as you probably see, the hotel is now going pretty steady. Uh, we look like we're getting ready to start pouring foundations and we're on track, well on track still to make the mail opening. Things are relatively problem free, which is good, very good news. Um, yeah, as you heard earlier from one of our, from during the, uh, open comments, the Osprey Point, the Lot A project, uh, did receive its, uh, [inaudible 00:11:11]. The planning commission, it was unanimous vote, and we have already received their site design application. So that process is underway. So we, we did experience a little bit of a delay. Do, you know, it's in part our own responsibility, so we did add a bit of extension time on some deliverables because we were, we're at a point now that we would pretty much be in breach contract, not by any good, not by any actions of others. So we've had some time and, but it's still going to be time interrupted. Um, you've probably certainly noticed that the city wholesale closed. Um, they are busy working. We should have hopefully, uh, Colonel 45 Brewery open for business by August 1st. That's more or less, see how fast the contractors work, but they, they, that's when he starts paying rent, they expense paying rent for their own trading business. So anyway, that should be underway. Uh, probably news that may be nearest and nearest to your hearts. Uh, Taylor's has, at least has about an hour ago. So that will be a sweet chop of sorts, not, not the same as the melting pot of Mark Hakes and the [inaudible 00:12:00]. Very much the same existing business in Salem. They're expanding their offerings and moving their venue over here. So you'll probably be getting some pretty good smells in and out of that building. The Taylor sign will remain up. There'll be some, there'll be some interpretive information about the, the history of the building that'll go with it. Um, and they will like you buy the entire building with a number of different ideas and thoughts, but the front will look very much like the [inaudible 00:13:04]. In terms of go in there, lurch mouth water and, you know, if you're, if you're not so concerned like I am, but I, you know, my trim physique, uh, you'll have a nice feeling. Um, we are, I keep hearing, we are this close to having been taken out of our financial position on mechanical. It is in, is in for refinancing. The lender's money is there. If there's one item that's outstanding, we hope that her, her [inaudible 00:14:16]. Can get that done, or the owner can get that done. And we should have that, we should be paid off by the end of the week. I think that our pressuring, that the pressure that we put on, I think paid off. So I think he's tired of hearing from us and our attorney about performing under the due to [inaudible 00:14:21]. Um, and one more business, uh, Valory Line Tavern. Yeah, it's hostile, it's been trying to get in on the fourth. It's going to be challenging. There's, she's working on some hard stuff. She's pretty out there to get that done, but it's reasonable to believe that she can she can at least have something available for the business during the holiday and perhaps on her patio out back. So we're working with her to see if we can't open that up. So that's pretty exciting. She's been busy inside and doing the garbage, putting new walls and whatnot. So that's going to be exciting business as well. I was a, I pitched it for Sean. I did my best to try and do that. It's hard to set it for the master, but I was in a housing workshop at the leading cities, probably Oregon City sponsored by the state. They were, they basically were trying to talk about different ways that communities get in the game on housing, whether it's affordable housing, standard market housing, whatnot. You know, it's a pressing issue in the state these days. So a number of different issues. I was a presenter as independents opening opens the doors for business. So they asked me to take 10, 15 minutes to talk through the issue of independence and where we are today downtown. I think I'd get that done in 10, 15 minutes. Half an hour later, they kind of cut me off and got in there, got in the queue and had a later. But, you know, there's so many, so many people, so much to say, you know, so much problems with being 20 years. And, you know, to embarrass the mayor, I think it was pretty obvious. We have an Olympian, you know, for 20 years running the show. You know, the get it done attitude is, the competitive attitude is hard to beat. So and having a council that's been pretty much the same folks over the course of years, a lot of constitutional memory, you know, achieved, there's going to be a board is, is, it all pays off. So that was just my presentation. It took me a little longer to tell that. I've been providing a little technical assistance to our latest, our newest higher recall city, their city manager. He needs to be on occasion and we've talked through some, some things to help that community to succeed. We are, we are already helping them with their, with the court issues, code enforcement issues. We are their quarterback for code enforcement, though I'm not sure we've got a case yet, but we signed that deal a while ago. And then finally, we have a, I'm not finding, I got by four things released from my chief, ELGA, which is Energize Local Government Leaders. It's changed, the acronym's remained the same, but the words have changed. It's an organization of budding public sector professionals, largely geared towards city management as a career, but not necessarily also department heads. It's an organization that has, it was started in Oregon. It is now national, maybe international, and they are a great training source for us. They've got a nice partnership again with the leagues, they've done some changes there. They are going to high highlights in one of their podcasts as well. So I called on that. So that'll be coming up fairly soon. But they're, they're really, they're really taken by what has happened in Independence. And they got that, they got that information from Skip Newberry, from the Technology Association of Oregon, who, if you recall, named us the innovation city of Oregon's first innovation city. So that, that's where the furl came from. But that was, again, could be positive. It was a little more opportunity for us to, you know, pat ourselves on the back publicly for the, you know, for a larger audience. Please for that. Here's some things from the police department. Busy with calls as well as several community events. Recently participated in cleanup days, officer any days, public library, fill the Busch Town Safety Fair at Bymart, Schmeckel Career Fair, Talmadge Health Fair. And they have major crime team call up this weekend for Polk County.
They're waiting for right now.
Of course, a little bit of my male's regular police work. On Friday, the 8th, Richard Gonzalez earned no suspicion, graduated from police academy. So we're happy to have him back on the, to help us fill the shifts and getting on. Also on the 8th, Sergeant Lyle Gilbert, who was in, went to Quantico, graduated from the FBI National Academy. So that was a great honor for him, great honor for, great job, great opportunity for him and great honor for us. I think most if not all of our demand level now has been through clinical training.
Chief still here?
I had to step out for a moment.
Okay.
Anyway, I think that's the case. So that's a, you know, it's hard training, it's great training, and it's really, you know, a great honor to have one of ours out there. Our Oregonians trek across the country for that. And of course, we are just, we are hosting currently a 40-hour crisis intervention team training at the Vent Center this week with attendees from around the state, a little five armed officers, including the chief. So that's what's going on. The PB again, an additional, everything that goes on in PB. Coming out of COVID works and things that I've highlighted for you, I talked about the park and the path in Inspiration Park. They've dedicated 150, 150,000 hours in the last week and a half of the obstacle course of the soccer fields, upgrade that, retake, upgrade that, take their exit. Number of water leaks were repaired. Continue to see a trend of higher frequency of leaks than expected. And three hundred leaks that are on board currently for repair. They, if you hasn't walked in, you may have seen the fill station out back. That is, that's to support our friends in Salem through their crisis. They are, they are still another two weeks on water abatement, water surveillance over there. We also feel the call from Department of Corrections I did yesterday. They're wanting to use us as an alternative supply initiative to Kaiser. So we, of course, we have a big event that they come on over. We're making those arrangements now. So, yeah, you know, we're doing what we can to help out the city. They're much bigger than we are.
I want to call out the staff for just a second here because I know when we got the word that Salem was jammed up, our people jumped on it and offered to be as helpful as possible. And we got a nice communication from their city manager appreciating our neighborliness, you know. Your neighbor got fired, you got hosed, you helped them out. So I just wanted to thank us.
We'll share that with the staff as well.
Thank you.
Continue. And you're right, we're there for, we're all there for everybody regardless of any, you know, community competition. There ain't no limit when it comes to emergency, when it comes to any, you just get in there and do it. Just the way you do it. So sewer, we're sealing the Knight Street fill station well and several leaking manholes. We've had meetings on irrigation airflow project. That's the Purple Pike project that we talked about in the summer, for summer discharges out. Some of you may be more familiar than others. It's a big project that we have to make over this coming year, work to put pipeline out to discharge our summer hold, sewer hold. Does anybody want me to spend a little more time on that to understand it versus we move past?
I don't know.
Move on, move on. Not sewer talk. Okay. One more sewer piece. We have the staff report on that. So skip it when the time comes. Let's just tell you that we received heads of your packets. We received bids from several firms, all of them well above engineers' estimates. Frankly, it's because we just got out too late in the bidding process. A lot of problems, a lot of issues. So the solution is really just to go over and bid it. We canceled, we canceled that bid. And we're going to go over and bid later in the winter and hope to get a better response, but people along here for, no guarantees, but you know, at least we'll give that a shot. Public Works is busy getting ready for summer series, busy getting ready for Fourth of July on streets. We're, this guy has been the city engineer for road maintenance projects for 2018, 19, the coming fiscal year. And next step is to field check, confirm the city maintenance plan selection. So we're just going through, we have money, we have, you know, we have money set aside in the budget for Black Topic, you know, our roads going in and doing some maintenance. And so just letting you know that fascinating, you know, July 1st is the new fiscal year. So once July 1st, yes, we'll try to be ready to, you know, and meet the, hit the window opportunity, you know, for getting equipment out there. Small work, we talked to you a little bit about this. We're continuing to work on the survey report for the fire year, TMDL, total mass loading limits into the river. That's, that's what that is. And so we have to have a plan in place to meet those discharges into the river. How do we manage that? And we have been dealing with DQ, so it's going to be watershed on a regular basis. Finally, in construction, as you can see, there's a plan shift on the hotel. The Indiana and the signing Riverfront, the Riverfront project is making great progress. They will, we understand that they should be having all wrapped up by October. So that's the good news. Bad news is they'll have it all wrapped up by October. Glorious has to figure out the bills that fast. And I don't want to be a big theory voice. So that's, that's the project that we're going to have to look, we have, we do have to actually do a little bit of active catch manager on that one because the money for that project actually doesn't come to us until spring. The work will be done in 18. So there's a little bit of, you know, a little balance. I can see some of that budget difference that are going to be before you. They'll help you have a little bit. So Liberty subdivision is, is nearing its final reviews and they're shooting at another 30-year, 32, 33 lots in addition to Quayle Ridge, can't run some division. So that is about another 60, so a lot of lots that are available for housing starts. We have one builder has already bought all of that, that project. And then the remaining two phases have yet to be developed and approved. So they're anxious to get going and we're working with them. And we're looking at plenty of plans on Quayle Run already as well. So how's, as soon as, you know, they're not, they're waiting for those subdivisions to get finalized, bladed, and maybe then made available for sale. And that's, that's the process. So now those properties are available for sale and they're getting snatched up by builders. And so they will see housing sprout pretty quick there. We estimate 40 housing starts for next year for an initiative that's extremely conservative. That's the number we're using, that's the number we use for budget purposes. We're completing the landing work. You can see the parking lot is virtually done. Needs to be striped. I think we have, we have some E charge in the station going in over there. We have some lighting that will be going in over there. You can see where the sidewalk ends halfway up the hill. That piece, that gap between city and the end of the wall that we haven't placed now, I mentioned this last time, will be done when Lot A is, when that work is done. So we doesn't have to, we don't put it in, tear it out outright. A little bit embarrassing. But otherwise, that's about the whole landscape. What's going to happen over here on our, on our parking lot adjacent to this property? Otherwise, that's, you know, that, we're about to wrap up their work. They did, they did great. They did good, very good work. They came in, did the second phase of the end of the stacking project. Really nice work. Another place. They were very fast and very responsive. You can see that if you're looking back on Independence Landing Riverfront project, I just walked in on my way in back to the office today. And they almost have the boardwalk completed to, to, the upper boardwalk completed to us here, which they're just moving great guns as well. And then you can see where the trails are starting to get carved in on the lower terrace as well. So it's, it's, it's moving on. Great project. Little icon development activity. We have a rural opportunity initiative from Lake Park on Thursday. Sean kind of put that together. I believe the mayor will be there for that opening. We had 60-plus attendants, lots of new faces, new entrepreneurs. This is a program that will help build local entrepreneurial ecosystem. I'll let you figure out what that means. Also, also had a great turnout for HBC's intensive little survey workshop on Saturday. This will be received in grant after consulting, look at free historic properties outside of the district, collect historical information, and position the homes for inclusion of the district if the owners are interested. So that, that will be on a good return out. And then finally, you saw the presentation on the virtual situation book and training. So that training practice is underway as well. That's what I have for the evening. If you have questions.
Okay.
And you.
I think we have some reports. The chairman, are you making your presentation?
Senator Mayr, glad to be here to introduce the person who's going to be presenting today. Stephanie Craig is an intern who's been with us for the last four months from the Confederacy 23rd one.
Good evening. Welcome to City Council.
Hi. It's weird being out in front of City Council. Usually I'm in front of tribal council. That's a little different. Hello, hi, I'm, hello, hi, I'm Paud White. My name's Stephanie Craig. Thank you for having me here today. My name is Stephanie Craig and I'm a grandparent tribal member. I'm Yonkalla in San Yum, Calaquilla, To Calaqo River, Quagmish, Chinook, and Calfree, Alka. My background is museum studies and cultural anthropology. My bachelor's degree is on Oregon Western tribes. My master's degree is in Western Lamont Valley tribes of Oregon, cultural anthropology and anthropology. I came in last year to the City of Crisis Museum because I've never studied or worked at a museum that ran off of the city budget. I had a college, as an undergrad, I had an internship at the Smithsonian Institute in Washington DC. And I also had an internship with the Umatilla tribe in Pendleton at their museum. So I hadn't had any experience on a small scale. I came in, I met Shannon, and it was a very busy museum with a lot of stuff in it. And I knew that I could probably give a little bit of help. But also, you guys as a city can help me and I can learn management practices on a city budget and city work. So we did a exhibit. It's called Inseca LE, which in our language in Chinook means our land. And we set, we, as you may see, we talked a little bit about the timeline of pre-contact settlement, stolen lands, and then tribal resilience facing down the relentless attacks of tribal Indian policy. Are just a couple little teasers from each of those sections. Pre-contact, if anyone goes around the city in May, you'll see purple flowers everywhere. And that is camas. That was a staple food of our people and we still eat it today. For settlement, one in 10 Native Americans died in this area. And the government paid off missionaries to run religious sex schools to assimilate the Native Americans. Richard Pratt, who was the founder of Carlisle School in the Carlisle Indian School, is noted for saying, kill the Indian and save the man. The city of Sheridan is named after Phil Sheridan, who later became a general after he was here in Oregon for three years. And he is famously quoted and noted for, a good Indian is a dead Indian. The other panel is stolen lands. In 1850, the Congress passed the Oregon Indian Act, which allowed, which allowed settlers to take land that was already owned and open it up for white people to come in and settle land. From 1850 to 1855, 25,000 to 30,000 people entered Oregon territory and pushed the Native Americans on reservations. Back in the day, there was hundreds and thousands of reservations. Just here, I think I counted seven villages that were distinctively distinct, distinct from each other. So can you, you can see how important this exhibit is, just not for the community, but for visitors that aren't from here. We've already had a couple visitors as we were installing the exhibit that weren't from here. And we have good feedback. So I hope that I hear feedback that every one of you guys have gone in and seen the exhibit because this is your business history. This is the culture of your town. And earlier you guys spoke of being, you know, inclusive and bigotry. And in order to understand that and not be able to allow that to keep happening, you need to understand your background, where you come from. And Independence has rich history. So I'm hoping you guys to see the exhibit.
Thank you for taking the time to come and present. I love it. So thank, thank you for helping to strengthen the bond between our community and the grandoff tribes. And we really appreciate adding to the richness of our community. Thank you for coming.
Is there any questions or comments?
You have a date on the opening of this exhibit.
It's open now.
Well, tomorrow.
We'll have a fall opening in November for Native American Shuma.
And you have already, here we can post on Facebook and website.
Well, has speakers coming and kind of a big kind of culturally thing. So we need to worry.
Anything we can do to help you promote that?
That would be amazing.
Let us know.
Please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Moving forward, Mr. Klein already gave the public works bid report, so I'm going to keep this moving forward. Mr. Johnson, I think you have, you wanted to say, you were looking for volunteers?
Yes, and I will just leave it at that. You can contact me after the meeting.
Okay. Ms. Bush provided a my act finance debt report in here. And so it was an information piece. I'm going to keep this moving. And let's go to, we have, Bush, I think it's your turn for supplemental budget.
Good evening. We have our supplemental budget and budget amendments. The supplemental budget was properly advertised for hearing. So other than the, the staff memo, we do need to have this as open up for hearing.
Do we have?
For the supplemental budget, yes.
Does anybody have anything to say? Now, public train for the supplemental budget. Does anybody have anything they want to say about the supplemental budgets?
I just have one question. I noticed on the resolution, it talks about the $3,100,000 loan transfers that are going to be happening. Will we be seeing income out of the urban renewal district this year in order to pay some of that back?
The urban renewal has been paying down those inter-fund loans. The urban renewal projects fund is in a deficit balance. According to our projections, it's going to improve by the end of our next fiscal year. So short answer is yes. It will repay, start repaying this loan this, this time. But it is, it is already in the process of repaying those back loans.
So wouldn't you think, is there anybody else that has, without objection, done closed that public hearing on the supplemental budget? So effectively what we're doing here is we're putting everything in the right places?
Yes.
Okay. And, and we've looked at this over time. Are there additional questions for staff before we take action? If someone would suggest action, I would appreciate that, please. Make this just a resolution.
I'm going to approve resolution number 18-1476.
I have a motion.
That's the inter-fund, right?
Did that first.
Yeah.
We have to do a resolution, so it's just, I mean, it's.
I thought they might supposed to be all.
I thought we had to be separate. No, not in a resolution.
You did, but he did the first one.
He did the first one. I'll cycle that. Okay, I've got a motion, a second. Let me get a clarification. We're just in a resolution. We're not in organs, right?
Right.
Okay, so okay, we motion second. Is there discussions? We're all okay with this? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And opposed, motion carries?
Is there any reason we can't pass the other two resolutions together?
I think, okay, I'm sorry. Yeah, I, excuse me.
You should be able to.
Yes, excuse me. Yes, thank you. Yes, excuse me, yes, thank you, I was, I was, go ahead.
Okay, I move to approve resolutions 18-1477 and 18-1478 regarding budget amendments for 2017-18 budget.
Second.
I have a motion second, thank you very much for helping, helping you there, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries, thank you very much. Okay, let's talk about the 18-18 budget.
Okay, so, once again, this is, I really don't have anything to add in addition to the staff report, this meeting was properly noticed for budget hearing, the, I included the detailed sheets with a budget for your information that shows the changes that the budget committee made and approved.
Great, so what we have?
We do need to open for public.
Yeah, I was gonna, I was just gonna do that, can I open both public hearings at the same time?
For the state revenue sharing and for the budget, yes.
Okay, so what I'm gonna do is open a public hearing regarding the state revenue sharing and also a public hearing regarding the 18-19 budget, does anybody have anything they'd like to say regarding those matters? See no one jumping to the microphone, I'm gonna close that public hearing, and let, let's do the, we now have actual, I'll make sure I get it right.
We can do all four at one time?
We do all four, is one in urban? No, we have to, we do urban renewal later, if I, I'll just make sure I get this in the right place, if I might, yeah, we're at page 30, so I think we have to do, we can't do the urban renewal, do we do the urban renewal?
Yeah, we'll have to open a separate.
That's what I thought, thank you, and so, revenue sharing, yes, okay, so we can do the first three, all as a loan, so I always think it's funny that we have, you know, approved to say yes to the state revenue sharing, yes, if someone would like to make a motion regarding these items, on page 30? Yeah, please.
I'm gonna do approve resolution number 18-142, resolution adopting the city of Independence budget for fiscal year 2018-19 in the sum of $26,793,646 to approve appropriations in the amount of $26,667,167 to impose and add to law and property taxes for 2018-19 at rate of 4.5897 per thousand of assessed value for the permanent rate, and in the amount of $420,469 for debt service of the general obligation bonds, and to categorize the taxes. I further move to approve resolution number 18-1481, a resolution to approve inter-fund loans for fiscal year 2018-19. I move to approve resolution number 18-1479, a resolution to elect to receive state revenues for fiscal year 2018-19.
Thank you for reading all those, I have a motion.
Second.
And I have a second, is there discussion? And just to let the audience know that the budget committee did review all this, passed unanimously, we have previously seen this on several occasions, so it's not, we spanned it, yeah, and with 132 pages of, of, of tonight's package, so I have a motion second, I hear no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries, thank you very much. Next, I have to put my sheet here, we have workers' compensation coverage, page 103, and, Mr. Johnson, I think you handle that one, is that correct?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, if it's okay with cancel, I'll just, for here, there's, this is virtually the same resolution as adopted in previous years, there's no change, this is workers' compensation coverage for all of our employees as listed in that memo.
Any questions related to this? Do you have to do this every year? Someone make a motion, I appreciate it.
I move to adopt resolution number 18-1401480, extending workers' compensation coverage.
Thank you.
Volunteers.
Volunteers, see?
Oh, volunteers for the policy year of 2018-19.
I have a motion second, discussion is pretty okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries. Mr. Irvine, I think you have something for us.
Senator Mayor, Council, you may remember this question about this time last year, our transportation system plan is about 10-plus years old, the city has changed significantly since that time, well exceeding what the expected growth rate was, and it's implications that have been unanticipated, so we applied last year to Transportation and Road Management Department to get a grant to update this plan, did not get it last year, I'm holding the second time with the charm, so I ask you all to approve resolution supporting our application for this grant program to fund this project.
Questions for staff?
I will always support free money.
If someone would make a motion, I appreciate it.
Yes, I move to approve resolution 18-1483, authorizing city staff to apply for a grant from the State Transportation and Growth Management Program.
Second, I have a motion second, discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries, thank you very much, thank you, we're gonna do council announcements, then we'll go to the urban renewal meeting, any council announcements? Okay, I'm gonna, so we're going to, somebody move to adjutant council committee? Move to here. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, adjutant, now I call the order of the urban renewal district, let the records show that all the counselors are here, and, let me get to my pages here, so I can. And are the minutes in front of you, do they meet with your approval? From September of 2017, urban renewal. I move to the, approve the minutes, and I can get a second, second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries, thank you very much. We now have, would you like to speak about the urban renewal budget, then we'll go open that, oh, this is the supplemental.
Yeah, we'll start with the supplemental budget.
Thank you.
So, once again, this was properly advertised, and, and since it's a full supplemental budget, we had to advertise a public for a hearing.
Okay, anybody have any, hereby open a public hearing related to the supplemental budget for the urban renewal district, do I hear anybody who wants to say anything? I see no one stepping to the microphone, I hereby close that, any additional comments from staff? Again, we've seen this all, this before in budget committee, if someone would like to do the appropriate voting.
I move to approve resolution number 2018, oh, urban renewal, resolution number 2018-141, supplemental budget.
I have a motion, and a second, is there further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries, thank you very much. Now move to the fiscal year 18-19 urban renewal budget, staff report, then we'll open it for comment.
Once again, this budget is, was approved by the budget committee, and the hearing was properly advertised, and.
Okay, now open public hearing, about anybody who'd like to have anything to say about the urban renewal budget for 2018-19? I see no one stepping to the, to the podium, so I will close the hearing, is there any questions for staff? Does anybody like to make a motion?
Sure, I move to approve resolution number 2018-02, a resolution adopting the Independence Urban Renewal District Budget for Fiscal Year 2018-19 in the sum of $361,607 to approve appropriations in the amount of $2,054,608 and to declare and certify the maximum tax increment that may be raised.
I have a motion second, I want to thank you for doing lots over here, we appreciate that, hearing, any other discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries, any last minute comments to make? Someone would like to make an adjutant, go and have dinner.
Move to here.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, thank you very much.